I don't want to upset Mr. Heiser here, but I think that's not being well.
Okay, well, welcome all to the Village of Rybrook Planning Board Session. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for your attendance. My name is Rob Goodman. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Also in attendance tonight are my colleagues John Gersan, Donald Crum, Scott Mendelson, Matthew Rutton. Is Matthew here?
No.
He's excused, I guess. Jeffrey Richmond and Amy Shown is excused. Also in attendance tonight is our Village Attorney, Robert Zitt, our Superintendent of Public Works, Michael Nowak, our Village Planning Consultant from Hardisty and Hanover, Sarah Brown. And thank you also to Tara Orlando, our Planning Board Secretary, who's not here, but we could not be here without her. And she prepares all the minutes and deals with all the back office stuff we have to deal with. So, thank you Tara. And also, I always omit him, but he's front and center of my thoughts, David Heiser, our Liaison for the Board of Trustees. First, we have May minutes. I did not attend the May meeting. Does anyone have any comments on the May minutes? Kind of a motion and a second to adopt the May minutes. Move.
Second.
Mr. Gersan.
Yes.
Mr. Crum.
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Chairman Goodman.
I think I have to abstain.
Michael, who prepares these minutes?
Tara does, I think.
Tara.
Wonderful job.
I want you to say that a little louder.
Thank you, wonderful job.
To Tara.
Yes.
That's right.
Yeah, Tara does the minutes and along with other department items within the building department. And, you know, it's a lot because she does planning, zoning, A or B, so she handles all three boards. So, yeah, so, good job Tara and thank you.
Yeah, and also our minutes are up to date.
I think what I like about it, because it captures the main points of the discussions.
It's always the hard part.
But I think, you know, I happened to chair the last meeting and, you know, I talk a lot, but she only captured significant points, which I enjoyed.
By the way, yeah, by the way, for all those who are listening out there or watching us, John, I did review the meeting from last time. John did, you know, thank you, John, for an excellent job. That was, you know, not an easy thing to do, to cover the Chair for the last meeting. Okay, on our agenda tonight are two items that were on our agenda last time, and we are going to deal with them tonight. The, I think the first one is 177 Betsy Brown. I think we already have a public hearing scheduled on that, so let's have a motion and a second to open the public hearing.
Move. Second.
Mr. Gersan.
Yes.
Mr. Crum.
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Chairman Goodman.
Yes.
Yeah, why don't you just give us a summary? Do you have a revised plan? Did you submit a revised plan?
You know, landscape plan and...
Okay, okay, you can go over that.
Yeah, I'll just go through the whole thing.
Yeah, that's fine.
There's been a couple at once.
That's fine.
My name's Steve.
Give me the microphone, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
My name's Steve Marcusani. I'm the Architect for the Franklins. We're proposing addition to the existing residence at Betsy Brown Road. The existing floor-to-air ratio is 2,060 square feet, and our proposed FAR is 3,615 square feet, which is less than a maximum of 3,000, excuse me, 706 square feet. We added 1,555 square feet, which is more than 50% of the existing, which brought us to this meeting here. So, what we're proposing is we're going to add 492 square feet, this little red area here, to the existing footprint of the house. The remainder of the additional square footage is on the, over the existing second floor, expanding second floor. The proposed addition deck all meet the zoning requirements for an R-10 zone. And we have done a deep hole and a perk test, and our engineer did a stormwater calculation, requiring 10 cul-de-sacs to catch all of the stormwater from the house, driveway, and the garage. We also included a landscape plan showing plantings in front of the house, as well as the, as well as the required trees from a previous tree permit that was taken out. And that's basically it.
Sarah, any remaining planning considerations?
No, we don't have any remaining comments. Our only comment was about the replacement trees, but they've been placed on the landscaping plan.
Right, and you're satisfied with their plan?
Yes, they're dogwood and eastern redbud trees, which will be nice additions.
And Mike, you've reviewed the stormwater management plan?
Yes, I have. I've reviewed the calculations and I've spoken to Hudson Engineering, and they're, they're okay as far as a 25-year storm event.
Okay. Members of the Board, if you have any questions?
I have a question on the stormwater and something that's been beyond this project. It's always been questioned in my mind, and I finally dawned on me, I was reviewing what you did there, that when you design a stormwater and you select the number of infiltration chambers, it's really based on the tributary area, which are impervious surfaces, not necessarily on the entire site runoff.
Not only.
Grass areas, no?
No. So, I know my, Mr. Nowak always says, you know, the water goes where God wants it to go. And if it goes into the neighbor's property, so be it. I mean, that's a free runoff. At the last, not the last meeting before, because there was no meeting last month. The month before, the young couple that were next door, they came and they kind of raised the question that, you know, at one point their basement was fully flooded, six feet, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't, I kind of live in the general area, so every time I walk by there, I look at the site. And the area adjacent to the right-hand side or adjacent to them, it's kind of sloped very severely to the, to their, kind of, there's a little space, it's kind of almost to their house. And when I looked at you, stormwater management, I said, oh my goodness, you know, this is going to help them a little bit because the water from the roof is going to go hopefully in the chambers. But the rest of the runoff, you're really not kind of considering. So, my suggestion would be, or recommendation would be, kind of, more a recommendation than a suggestion. It would be nice if along their property line, you put a kind of little swell and you kind of guide that water from that swell right into the cul-de-sac infiltration chambers, even if it means putting additional two units. Would that be possible? I think it would be really, would be a good neighbor approach, if you will. It would definitely solve the problem for the young couple that lives next door to you.
Right. Well, I had talked to them after the last meeting and explained to them that we were catching all the rain and also that we're, since we're going to end up be putting trees here too, that'll help build up that grade because we're going to have to...
I think anything short of the little channel swell, small swell, you know, few inches, five, six inches in depth and the kind of, you can have a grass, grassed area swell, but just so the water would not run over to their property. You have so much room back there for the, to put the infiltration chambers. So, whether you put a 10 or you put 12 of them, I don't really think makes so much of a difference. But it would be a, I think would really improve the situation that they are experiencing now.
Michael, what do you think? Have any opinion?
So, our code, our stormwater code has specific language on when it is deemed that stormwater management is required. And our code stipulates that once 400 square feet of additional impervious is added onto the site, stormwater management is required for capturing all runoff from impervious surfaces for a 25-year storm event, which is 6.4 inches of rainfall, okay? And the Village has a number of caveats within the code that are as follows. A perk test is required to determine what the percolation rate of the soil is, which I, which is necessary to determine how many chambers are required, okay? We require that a engineer does not take a pre-construction, post-construction credit for what used to be lawn area before, now it's concrete or impervious. What that would do is that would minimize that 6.4 inches of rainfall, basically to half, almost. So, you would only have to capture 2.6, 2.7 instead of 6.4. So, our code does not allow that, okay? Furthermore, we require full capture of all impervious, not just the difference between, between pre and post. So, you're designing for a full 25-year storm event. So, a person in this area gaining six feet of water did not happen during a normal rain event, okay? I'm here 20 years, have not been in that location with six feet of water during a normal storm event. That probably happened during an Ida Sandy Lee situation where unfortunately, all bets are off on any drainage at that point because two, four, eight, 10 inches of rain intensity in one hour, there's no way any system's going to handle that, okay? So, what you're asking for, Mr. Gersan, is to capture some of the sheet flow, in essence, off the lawn, that's flowing potentially that way by topography. Now, putting in one or two is just, it's just like this.
No, I'm really saying that...
It would have to be designed to do that. So, it's not just maybe one or two, it may be five, six, seven, but what is the standard that you're designing to? Our code doesn't have a standard. So, someone could come in and put in one cul-de-sac 180, which is the min, which is the smallest cul-de-sac and say, okay, I put in a cul-de-sac, but it's the smallest one that's, so, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Thank you. I'm very familiar with what you said. But sometimes, I think we need to go a little bit beyond the code, you know? We have the public hearings, we encourage public to, neighbors to participate. And when people participate, I think we need to hear them once in a while. And I am not saying do it, but it would be a nice gesture. And what you are basically telling me, well, the code doesn't require it, okay? But sometimes we need to go a little bit beyond the code, all right?
And I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just explaining what the process is with regards to stormwater. There needs to be a realization of when something happens, okay?
And you know, I'm very sensitive to water runoff because I have a problem in my own house for the last 25 years, okay? And you know it. And if you walk over my property today, there's about three, four yards of topsoil that I have to spread around because every time there is a water, heavy rain, my backyard floods away, all right? So, you know I'm very sensitive to that, all right?
Understood.
And that's irrelevant, as far as I'm concerned here. But this is a small gesture that we can do for the neighbor next door, and what you are basically telling me, well, we really don't have to.
Well, I mean, the applicant technically doesn't have to. The applicant can do it if they decide they want to do it. We can't compel them to do it unless there is, I mean, what you're suggesting, Mike, is even if the applicant, you know, did what John is suggesting, that still may not resolve the problem.
And that's what I'm trying to understand.
Because it's hard to determine.
I'm sorry. I mean, that's what I'm trying to explain.
Right.
Because Mr. Gersan had made a statement saying, well, that'll help solve the problem.
It may not.
From a legal perspective, and I'm not an attorney, you know, there's only so much that could be captured and done at a certain time, okay? And there's a difference between a requirement, there's a difference between a feel-good gesture, you know? Is there, and we have to evaluate the entire area, is there a recurring flooding issue in this area? Recurring during one-inch storms, two-inch storms. That's what you have to take into consideration. If it's a one-in-a-50-year storm and that's when someone got hit, you know, yeah, it, it's not a fun thing. And I'm not trying to be insensitive to that, but those are your 50, 100-year storm events that cause catastrophic issues in municipalities versus your microburst on an August afternoon that just dumped two inches of rain in an hour and that person got flooded. So, is it a recurring issue that someone's constantly getting flooded due to topography, due to soil characteristics, due to some kind of drainage event? Or is it, we just got hit hard by a major storm event and we got hit hard?
Well, I guess, I guess my concern is, is that applicants that are complying with our stormwater management regulations have regulations to which they have, that they have to comply with. It would be very hard for applicants if they didn't really know what the standard was. And what you're articulating is, and I know in the past, the Planning Board, because it's a planning board, we're not a zoning board, so we're interested in, the code does not cover all contingencies. That's when the Planning Board comes in. But usually, it is something very marginal that can be done by an applicant. Like, if all you were doing is, if you were doing regrading and you were grading it in a way, you had various options, but you could grade it in a way that could benefit a neighbor, then we would say, do it. And you would probably say, no problem. But this, the...
And there probably would be some regrading in the sense that we're putting 10 cul-de-sacs in, there's going to be a lot of...
Right. But if, but if we're talking about...
So, we could do a little swell on the side.
And go where? That's...
Yeah, right. Who else is being... I mean, it, yeah, I mean, it sounds like this is a slippery slope to reevaluating a stormwater management plan, even though it would be good for the neighbors. By the way, this is a public hearing. I, you know, we'll be closing the public hearing, but we'll be asking the public to attend. And, you know, it's like, I understand John's point, but what I'm concerned about is, is that people have to know what the standard is. And stormwater management is not an inexpensive or easy thing to do. So, so unless it's a very marginal thing that could be done to improve the situation, I'm very hesitant to require an applicant to do that. I, you know, I welcome input from my colleagues. Do you want to hear my comments?
Yeah, why not?
I mean, I did, I would love to see, and I know this may not be in the budget, but I did my own informal, as I was educating myself on stormwater management issues in the Village. And I am a civil engineer and I studied this in college and developed hydroelectric plants, so I have some familiarity with hydro, hydraulic, you know, hydraulic issues. But I did an informal survey of other communities in Westchester County, New Jersey, flood-prone, you know, communities in New Jersey, coastal communities in California that were expressing issues. My opinion, and I might be wrong, I'd love to see some more technical rundown. We may have one of the very, very toughest stormwater set of requirements in the country. It is incredibly difficult. I'd love to hear, you know, just a survey of even professionals, like how our village ranks, and for good reason. And I'm not saying we should loosen it, but I, I'm, I'm afraid of trying to, you know, and I know you're not attempting to change the code, but our code is really severe. I think that's sort of what I...
I like our code. I'm not asking to change the code.
But I mean, I sort of feel like Mike is saying, not just what it is, but he said 10 reasons why ours is severe.
I am speaking more as a resident, unfortunately, than as a board member.
Yeah.
And sometimes I speak from the heart.
Right, it's okay, it's good.
And if, you can, you can criticize me for that.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
But I feel good about it. And what I'm suggesting, in the scheme of things, that are going to take place on this particular site, this is a miniscule thing. The soil is going to be disrupted, well, vegetation that was there for years is going to be disrupted because of the very fact that the site is, is going to be fully under construction. And what I'm basically saying, when you go back and you see that the very end and you do the surface restoration, you know, put a little swell. That's all I'm saying.
But I mentioned that at the meeting...
I'm not saying change the code. I'm not saying that, you know, it's all right or we go into legality of the thing.
No, but when the, when the neighbors were here, I mentioned that as an, as an option. And for whatever reason, it was, it was discussed that that would be adverse to somebody else or not a good solution. So, I mean...
Okay.
There was a reason for that though, right? Because I came up with the same suggestion.
I made my comment, I made my suggestion. I am going to support the project. I'm going to vote yes, all right?
Yeah.
But it's, I'm a little bit taken backs every time, you know, we always throw the book at each other. I mean, you know, why?
Well, look, and I think it's important, and I think our Board is more innovative than most in that we, you know, do push the envelope and we do have discussions like this.
I know we do that, but we still, you know, I'm here for 37 years and we do have a water runoff problem, whether you like it or not in the Village.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, and that may require us to, you know, revisit...
Now, whether infrastructure is sufficient to handle it, but there is a, there is a water runoff problem.
Yeah, no question about that.
And every, every parcel of land, where you have a natural runoff, when a parcel is intact, is a one scenario. And I'm not a structural engineer or, I happen to be electrical engineer, so what the heck do I know about the runoff? And when you take a native site and you disrupt that and you build five, six homes on that site, you change whether, you know, I think common sense says, you change the one, you know, God's way of water running off the site.
Understood. But, I mean, look at those people. They built the swimming pool on Hillendale. They built a huge, a huge, what was it called, rain garden? That thing was huge. They put a small swimming pool in and they, we have a tough code, is what I'm trying to say. But also, we have, but also, you know, we have a tough problem where development was done in the Village at a different historical point in time, when people weren't as conscious about the environmental constrictions. Right. And now, a lot of things of, you know, the rubber has met the road on that. And a lot of properties are finding themselves with a lot of flooding problems. And the truth of the matter is, is properties should have never been built there. But that would have been extremely far sighted for the Boards in the Village to say, like in 10 years' time, because of climate change, you're going to be underwater, so you probably shouldn't be developing the site. But in any case, with, are there any further comments with respect to this application? Okay. We have a resolution. First of all, we, first of all, is there anyone in the public out there that would want to speak to this application? No one? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. You could be here all night, you know? I never understood why people waited to second, like...
Everyone is eyeing...
Somebody else, I'm waiting for somebody else to say second, you know?
Mr. Gersan.
Yes.
Mr. Crum.
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Chairman Goodman.
Yes. I'll start pulling names out. And, yeah, absolutely. Call names out, that's a good... Robert, you have a resolution?
Yes, this is the, the short and sweet version. The written resolution is more fully captured on the Village's website. Whereas, on behalf of the property owners, Michael and Amy Frillank, the applicant submitted application for approval of a site plan concerning the proposed construction of a first and second floor addition to an existing dwelling along with the installation of a patio at the property located at 177 Betsy Brown Road, identified as Section 135.44, Block 1, Lot 19, in the R-10 zoning district. Whereas, the Planning Board is the approval authority for this application, and the application is a Type 2 action under SECR. And a duly advertised public hearing was opened on July 11th, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given the opportunity, and the public hearing was closed. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Village of Rybrook Planning Board hereby approves the site plan for the proposed construction at the subject property, based on the conditions set forth therein.
Any conditions?
Just standard conditions. Applicant shall submit construction management plan, et cetera.
I see those two long paragraphs at the end, resolutions are appearing now. I haven't seen those, these two big ones. It'd be for the resolve during construction, the Village Building Inspector, Superintendent, blah, blah, blah.
Sure. So, in the event that there are sort of minimal changes that could be addressed at the administrative level, that just authorizes it to be dealt with in that...
I'm glad to see that. I think it's long overdue.
I think it was actually as a result of, was our Board's recommendation that that be done because we had a problem with, with site changes. And the issue was, should they come before the Planning Board or not? So, we wanted to notify applicants that they couldn't just do site changes and not come back to the Board if they weren't just minor. So, I think that language, I'm glad you approved that language because I think we were responsible for that. But, okay. Are there any comments relating to the resolution? Can I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution?
So moved. So second.
Mr. Gersan.
Yes.
Mr. Crum.
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Chairman Goodman. That's what I'm talking about.
There we go. Anyway, thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck, huh?
And also...
Small swell, don't forget.
And also, I appreciate your patience from, from last time. I'm glad we got it done, okay?
I thought I was going to get a little swell until you guys turned all against me. You can win, can win.
Okay, 177 Betsy Brown Road. So, what is it?
No, that was 177.
That was, that was, that was it.
7 Lincoln Avenue.
7 Lincoln, right, got it. Sorry about that. Now, the procedural posture that we were in last time is that it was really the first appearance of the applicant. And usually, we schedule a public hearing for 30 days later, and then we open up the public hearing and we deal with the application. You guys are a special case because you dutifully showed up at our last meeting, ready to have that public hearing scheduled, and we weren't able to schedule it because we didn't have a quorum. So, our back channels have been working hard to get this public hearing on for you. And I just want to make sure, I think you've been in contact with the Village all the, Mike, the notices, everything that needs to be put up.
All of that has been communicated, legal, everybody.
Right. So, what I propose is that we open up the public hearing today, instead of next month, and adjudicate this application so that this applicant can be on his way. Any, any objection? All right, can I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gersan.
Yes.
Mr. Crum.
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson.
Yes.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Chairman Goodman.
Yes. Okay.
Well, we certainly appreciate that very much.
Appreciate your patience from last time. Thank you.
So, I'm Jim Anacarica with Cronin Engineering, representing Mr. Paul Cuziapolli. This is an application, a site plan application and steep slope permit application for what is now a retaining wall, segmental retaining wall, tiered retaining wall in his backyard at the back of his property, which is about 15,450 square feet. Really, the need for this came about, Paul's backyard, when he called me and said he had a wet backyard, I showed up without my boots and I really wish I had shown up with my boots because I've never seen a wetter backyard when I showed up. So, the first thing Paul...
Where is the water coming from?
It appears to be coming from somewhere underground. In the northeast corner of his property, he had excavated some of the slope, and there was literally, there's literally a five, I would say a five to seven gallon a minute stream coming out, coming out of a rock fissure, basically. Just backyard, spongy, soaking wet. And his yard is very, very flat, you know, from the point at the bottom of the slope at the back of the yard to the, towards the front. Just really a bad situation.
Is the water coming from underneath, from the ground, or is it, is it running off from the...
It's not, it's not, it's certainly not runoff, sheet runoff from the property above. I mean, the, the property above is... the, the property above are, are higher obviously, it's the Rytown Hilton property. There, there actually is a berm behind Paul's property on the Rytown Hilton property. It was actually what I guess at one time was a very defined swell and I think it's just gotten filled in with leaves and debris over the years.
Is this continue for a while, for a long time or is this a wet backyard just recently?
Uh, for quite a long time, Paul tells me.
Okay, so it's not, it's not a broken water line someplace?
Don't believe so, yeah, I don't believe so.
Okay.
I mean, Paul has a, a sump pump in his basement that runs constantly.
Wow, so.
So.
Continue, now I'm intrigued with what you're gonna do to help.
As we say, yeah. We, uh, you know, the first thing, you know, we, we, I met with Mike at the site and Mike's been great about trying to get the Rytown Hilton to try to, you know, clean up that. What I, what I thought was happening, or I still think is happening, is that a lot of the runoff that does come down from the Rytown Hilton property and stop in their swell, which I should also mention, their swell I guess eventually goes to the north and eventually discharges into the town system.
Right.
The village's system. It seemed to be, you know, there's not much pitch in it, debris, things like that, so a lot of the water was sitting there. It's hard to say if that water's just seeping into the ground and then coming out into his property or if it's actually like an underground, you know, some sort of stream.
It doesn't sound like it helps.
But, so Mike, Mike has helped to clean that up, you know, they, they, they obviously have a big site up there, a lot of their water gets channeled into, you know, one discharge point. So, what we've proposed on, on our property is this tiered retaining wall, which Paul basically wants to, just to try to, you know, give himself a little bit more of a backyard and then at the same time, capture the, the runoff that's coming out of there with, basically with the footing drains that are gonna be placed at the, in the, you know, behind the wall, behind the retaining wall. We've also added a swell at the back of that and we've kinda added some swells to the sides to, to your, to your comments earlier.
So what are you gonna take, you, you're basically going to?
We're basically capturing.
Capture the water and take us some other place?
Gonna try to capture the water, we're not, we're obviously not adding any impervious area other than the wall itself, which was, is way less than four fifty square feet. But we are trying to capture.
Are you channeling the water up to the street to the city bike?
We are proposing that as, as much as we can. It's, it's the footing drains basically for the walls that are probably gonna capture the most water. That's the water that's really just coming onto his property from underground. And then swell wise, that's just gonna be to control any runoff, sheet runoff that, that might make its way onto Paul's property and to kind of try to keep it on his property and get it towards the front.
Now, the two retaining walls, they're not gonna be in the property line, are they?
No, no.
They're gonna be on, within your property?
They'll be within his property, yes, yes. And they're not very tall, their, the back wall is three feet high, the front wall is two feet high.
Okay.
And then they're just come on down and.
They're not in the property line?
No, it's probably about six.
Mike's court does not allow walls in the property line, right?
Right, they're about six to eight, six feet.
It's like eight feet.
Yeah, six feet off the property line in his property.
Alright.
Um, you know, we, we don't have any trees we need to take down to do any of this. We, you know, we saw the, the planning comments and we have no, I think it was always Paul's intention, although we never provided a landscaping plan, but I think it's his intention obviously to, to landscape between the two walls. There's a, there's a good ten feet between the two walls of, of area that could be landscaped.
Is that, have you proposed a landscaping plan?
I did, I did not, I said, but we have no problem with that if that's, you know, one of the requirements.
Alright, well, I'll, we'll confer with Sarah.
Sure.
About that.
Chairman, I still have a difficult time visualizing, what, what are they really proposing?
Yeah.
There's drawings, yeah.
Yeah, do you have any, I don't know.
I do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I kinda always think that everybody's got everyone on the screen now, but, so I didn't, but if you wanna, do you need to take a look at it or any, I, I don't know, I guess I can put it up.
I, no, I, I think there are drawings in our attachment, but they're very, you know, very difficult to read.
Yeah, well.
So basically the applicant is proposing, applicant is proposing something similar to what was done in Hidden Falls, where it was a two-tier retaining wall, one in front of another with eight to ten feet in between it to hold, built into a slope, so that's kinda what's gonna be with a couple of wing walls on each side to stagger down the side slopes.
Totally within the code?
Totally within the code.
Fine, okay.
And Sarah, what about the landscaping?
Yeah, I was gonna add about the landscaping, in this case, we didn't actually recommend landscaping because of the amount of water that Mike had told us was back there. I don't know if it could really support anything and we don't wanna plant trees that could compromise the retaining walls, so as long as it's gonna be a grassed area, I would be okay with actually, they're not taking out any trees, so we don't, we're not in a situation where we need to put replacement trees in, it may actually be better in this case to not put additional landscaping.
That's something to consider because it's, it's awful to put landscaping with places where it doesn't end up working.
Right.
And things end up dying and whatever.
We, we obviously plan on, you know, grassing the backyard, which we can't right now because it's always soaking wet and it just doesn't, doesn't take, um, so.
Be able to put some landscaping up in between the two-tier walls, maybe just a little bit of, just to break it up, something like, name some boxwoods or some, yeah, smaller.
Something like that, absolutely.
Do they need a, do they need a landscaping plan for that?
And I think they could probably put some together, email it over on the plans and I'll, and I'll talk to Sarah about it and we'll, I mean, if the board's okay, we'll, I think we could work that out amongst ourselves if you're okay.
It could be a condition.
If, if you look at the survey, in effect you have a two-tier backyard right now. I mean, there is a, you know, you go from eighty-four feet to seventies, you know, seventy, mid-seventies, so in a, within a foot, two feet, so in effect you almost have a two-tier backyard.
Right, there, there's, there was material that was taken out from, you see where the steep, where the contours are real close to one another? It was kinda moved over to the, to the right side or the south end of the property for now. That, it wasn't always like that, that, that was some work that was done without, you know. But that's why we're here now, we're trying to, trying to stabilize this whole slope and get it cleaned up and deal with the water at the same time.
So you started this work and then you gotta stop order?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, is there any chance that anybody could approach the upper wall, like the public from the hotel or neighbors? Is there any chance they, anybody or pets or whatever could get above that wall?
I don't think so, um.
There would be trespassing.
There is a fairly.
Trespassing is illegal.
Okay, besides that, I mean, there's, there's a fairly dense buffer and, and there, there actually is a berm now on the Rytown Hilton property and you have to actually, there's, I don't know if you know it, but there's, there's the path, there's a path back there. And then you have to kinda, you have to make it wait.
Is the path close to your property?
Uh, it's probably about twenty-five feet away from the property, maybe thirty.
I mentioned it, but in, the code guys could pick this up, but the upper wall is a more than thirty inches high? So technically, if the public has any chance of coming upon that.
Right.
You would need some sort of guardrail or fence? I noticed the right-hand neighbor has a fence, so that's not an issue. If, what I was trying to say and not have you put any kind of guardrail or fence, if there is little to no chance anybody could approach that and sort of stumble over it.
Right, I, I think that path is far enough away.
Pretty far enough away, okay.
It'd be difficult for somebody to make it.
If you look at the survey, I'm looking at the survey, the property to the right, tax lot number five, it shows that there are two concrete walls on that property, running perpendicular to your property. I'm just curious, what kind of concrete walls are those, they're like what, four, five feet apart? And if those are deep foundations, I could see where that could have disrupted the underground water flow.
But it's actually coming from the opposite side.
Oh, it's from the left side?
It's coming from the left side, yeah.
It's the upstream side in a sense.
Right.
What are those two, anybody knows what are those concrete walls, just curious?
What they're, what they're, what they're serving as, yeah.
I, I guess that's what you're proposing yourself too.
Similar.
Could be they're having the same problem.
Similar, similar.
Except ours, ours will be built probably the right way. I mean, I don't have all those problems, or they say they're concrete, I don't know if they have footings and drains in them.
I'm just, just reading what's on the map, yeah.
We're gonna build this in a way that helps the drainage.
So where, if you look, point me on the survey map, where in, on the survey map would the two walls be located? Would be end to end, the entire width of the property?
From the right-hand side, where you were, mentioned the concrete walls, we're in about, probably about twelve feet, ten, twelve feet and then on the left-hand side, we're in about six feet from the property lines.
Okay. So you are basically following the steep slope, if you wish. So the walls are not gonna be straight line, it's gonna follow the property.
Uh, I mean, it, it will be straight from south to north, the two tiers, the wings will come down, but there will be a fair amount of area, you know, around the wall, between the wall and the property line, well, on all three sides. At least, like I say, six to eight feet on the north end, about six to eight feet along the property line with the Rytown Hilton and then about ten to twelve feet with the neighbor to the south.
So, did, did you do any testing to kind of, at least get some sort of indication that these walls are going to help you solve the wet backyard?
Uh, there's really no way to do anything.
Or you're just going to basically level the property, so to speak?
Yeah, I mean, we, we're doing, there was really no way to do anything onsite to fix drainage here. Like, I can't put Coltex in the ground here because they'll fill up immediately, that, that's how wet this backyard is.
And what's the difference in elevation from the backyard to the front of the street?
Uh, backyard's eighty-five, elevation eighty-five and the front street is seventy-six, so it's only about nine, nine-foot difference, yeah.
So you can have the nice water flow pipe, you can, you can put it like a, a chamber in the back there, like it's a stand and have a pipe from the bottom to the street and you kinda move the water away.
Right, I mean, for the most part, the lot itself from the street, seventy-six, like I said, almost all the way to the back property line, right now it's about seventy-eight.
You have enough of the gravity to, to move the water.
We, we're only, the majority of the, of the lot, there's only a two-foot difference in elevation from the front to the back. It's, it's at the very back of the, the lot, that's eighty, that's eighty-five feet.
Where is the water gonna go?
Uh, the water, we have the water going, well.
I think there is.
We have the footing drains for the wall tied into small yard drains, one on each end, which will also pick up sheet flow from two swells that we created on the sides, if you can see those. And then that, those, that yard drain, at least the one yard drain, is gonna be piped to the front.
I think there's a catch basin on the Lincoln Avenue that you're going, you're going to.
I was just concerned if it's really that wet, is it, is the catch basin gonna be able to catch all the water coming off this property or are we gonna create a situation where there's water running down Lincoln Avenue and, and freezes and everybody's driveways are now frozen over and?
Well, there's a thirty-inch RCP pipe in that catch basin, so, you know, I don't, I, we'll have minimal impact, you know, even, during a, during a large storm, that pipe may be very, very full, but whatever we're adding to it, it's really not gonna have any significant impact to that. This is really gonna allow Paul's backyard to dry out under normal conditions, which will have really no impact on that, on that pipe.
You agree, Mike?
Their pipe is, is gonna go directly into the back of the catch basin, so there's not gonna be any icing or sheet flow across the road.
Right.
So from that regard, that was one of the things we discussed. With regards to overflow, there are, I believe, three or four basins, there, there are three or four basins just at the intersection right there that go across West Chicago Stadium as well. So, in major heavy storm events, we do get those, all those anyway bubbling up as it is, just by volume, even though it is a thirty-inch pipe, that goes back to our other discussion, you know, you have five, seven inches, everything's going full, but the goal here is to give the property a blue-sky day chance to kinda dry out a little bit and give it a relief, cause even as of right now, we looked at the Coltex and they're eight inches from the top or ten inches from the top, even right now, they're holding water, so. So the goal is to give them some relief and get some of that water away. Try to at least give the property a usable piece of property somehow.
I, I, I think it probably looks the best, the best, best option. You have the catch basin on either, on either side of your property in the back.
Right.
And then you're connecting the two and then you have a pipe going to the Lincoln Avenue.
Right, so we are trying to control the water also.
Mike, you have no problem then connecting to the catch basin on Lincoln Avenue?
Yeah, that's.
As long as it's going in and you're not gonna get that sheeting, that's.
And the walls are as much a way to hide the drainage, right?
Because you can't just like build it underground.
Right.
You're, you're trying to cut the water off as it potentially.
I mean, the back of this wall is gonna have probably two feet of gravel behind it with the pipe at the bottom.
Yeah.
Like you would typically build a wall.
So it's drainage disguised as a wall, sort of thing, yeah.
I, I think it looks like probably best, best option that you have right now. It's to the code and you have no problems. I don't have a problem either.
There's already screening on both of the sides.
Right, there are fences on, along both properties.
Yeah, I think you're making the best of a challenging situation. Okay, unless there.
And you, these walls are gonna be designed by an engineer with the proper footing and the back, you know, okay.
We have details on the plans for that.
Okay, fine, I have no problem.
Okay.
They aren't very high as well.
Yeah, I know.
Two feet and three feet.
I mean, we may end up maybe making the front wall three feet and the back wall two feet, maybe if that helps with the, in case somebody.
Technically, if you made them both thirty inches, you wouldn't have to worry about.
Right.
Or twenty-nine and a half.
Right, right.
Okay. If there's any member of the public out there that would like to speak to this application? Any other comments by the board?
No.
Can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
So moved. So second.
Mr. Grzan?
Yes.
Mr. Crum?
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes. And Robert, we have a resolution?
Yes, resolution granting site plan and steep slope work permit approvals for property located at seven Lincoln Avenue. Whereas Paul Cuzipoli submitted applications for approval of a site plan and steep slope work permit for the proposed construction of a two-tier retaining wall with stormwater drainage facilities for the property located at seven Lincoln Avenue. Whereas the planning board is the approval authority for this application and whereas the proposed action is type-two under SECR. Whereas on July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the planning board opened a duly noticed public hearing on the application, at which time all persons interested were given an opportunity to speak as to the application. Now therefore be it resolved that for the reasons stated herein, the village of Rybrook Planning Board hereby approves the site plans listed herein and approves a steep slope work permit for the construction of the proposed project.
Okay, any comments regarding this, the resolution?
No.
Can I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Second. Our names are gonna be in the minutes of the meeting, you and I really deserve the credit just today.
Mr. Grzan?
Yes.
Mr. Crum?
Yes.
Mr. Mendelson?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let us know how it works out, I hope it dries out, okay?
I do too.
Yeah.
She'll be mad at me if it doesn't.
Yeah, I'm sure it's not cheap.
Take care.
Yeah, we have nothing further, I was planning on having the planning board take the month of August off. John, John can be here by himself, I, I don't know, I have, I have some holidays planned, I'm sure all of you do too and I think our fall is gonna be a busy fall, so we might as well take advantage of it while we can. while we can. I don't think there, are there any applications that are in the pipeline, Mike?
From a residential perspective, I don't have any residential projects. We have the one commercial project, which is the hotel, which is gonna be coming down, but short of that, I don't have anything right now on my desk, or in the hopper for the planning board.
Right, okay.
And we just cleared up our agenda, pretty much.
I, I have no problem missing the, as long as the trustee, I said, gives me a waiver, because, you know, I could be going on probation if I miss too many meetings.
That's true.
And I was counting being here in August.
It's okay, we'll give you the waiver. You got it.
You're speaking for yourself, Rob.
All right.
Yeah, and then the, and we will, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I mean, we have educational sessions that are sort of piling up, that we're gonna have to deal with at some point. What were we planning on doing, anyway? I can't, I can't remember. But actually, there's.
Stormwater management training.
Stormwater management. There's also another one, which, which may have some relevance relating to landscaping. I think we had some discussion about landscaping, we had a project almost here relating to landscaping. I think it would be good to sort of know more about how landscaping can maybe help with dealing with water in the back of homes and things like that. You know, our little development has a lot of units with very soggy backyards that could probably be helped if there were maybe correct plantings, if anyone really paid any attention to what the landscaping was, use of grasses, stuff like that. So, that may be something, you know, we can.
Yeah, we could add that to our list about landscaping, and maybe to how things, how they look on the plan, and then how, in practice, after they grow, what the buffer really becomes?
Yes, yes.
They grow very fast.
They grow very fast.
Yes.
And sometime.
I learned that my, my.
The spacing.
And then I go to Michael to give me a permit to remove it, he said, no.
We have a lot of wet backyards, I need it.
So, I will add landscaping to our list.
Yeah, let's, let's recall in one of our, you know, pre-agenda sessions, let's, let's sort of remind ourselves what are, what sort of sessions we should have, and maybe depending, you know, we can do it either before or after, but we should get some of these things done, you know, I think.
Yeah, this could be a controversial topic regarding landscaping, but if you're talking landscaping design, it seems like a lot of people, the public or even we, we're always talking about buffering, screening, 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 screening. And what ends up happening over time is you get, every lot has an immense, like, hedge, 40, 50 feet high, whatever, surrounding the yards. And maybe every property owner loves that, that everybody wants their own little oasis, but as regards landscape design for a community, I don't know if that's the optimal. I mean, I would love to hear professionals training on that, because we, it seems like the solution to everything, it's just more screening. Oh, you don't, you think you might see the thing? More screening. As opposed to, and by the way, this is not just theoretical, because it's, it was kind of, that issue was kind of on the agenda for this.
That was on the agenda, and in fact, when, if it comes back before us, we're gonna have a site visit just to, just to illustrate what can happen. It's very rare that we have an opportunity to see the results of decisions that we make down the road. This, this was a, you know, the product of this process, because there was a reported recommendation from the planning board relating to landscaping, which was, of course, adopted by the Board of Trustees, but it sort of originated with us. And now, like, 10 years later, eight years, 10 years later, we see the results of that landscaping, and it's not pretty. And so I think there are maybe things, lessons that we can take away from that, that experience, that maybe we can apply to, you know, our understanding. Plus, I think, Sarah, I think we could be much more intelligent interlocutors with yourself, because we just say, well, Sarah, what should the landscaping be? But, but I don't think we have really any understanding about, that there are certain types of landscaping serving certain types of purposes. And, and I'm not as familiar with that as I probably should.
I stopped at a nursery this past weekend, and I wanted to buy a few Aberwides. And, you know, I didn't realize that there are different types of Aberwides. And the one that I was looking at, it says six feet, and then you'll read that, it says can grow up to 45 feet.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I said, wait, then, you know, that's exactly, you know, I don't mind having a six-feet hedge, but 45 feet?
Yeah.
That's gonna close my house away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, I think that was a good point, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is a good point.
I think it's a good topic.
It's a good.
I'll put it in our list.
It's a good topic.
And also, when you have a setback of 15 feet, you know.
They grow this way, too.
And you can barely, you can barely move between the house and the, and the hedge.
Sometimes that gets forgotten, how wide they get as well.
But also, that landscaping can have very practical utilitarian reasons. It can, because plants absorb water, some may absorb water than others, you know, some may discourage bugs or animals, vermin, whatnot. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's like, depending on what you want to do, there are, there, you know, there's, there may be plants that can help you to do it, and.
And then in some cases, it's better to not plant anything.